Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February thirteenth Board of Education meeting. It is now seven oh eight and we will call the meeting to order. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A reading of the meeting notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger, posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Posting of this meeting, setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call attendance.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Brusella?
Here.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Here.
Mr. Boone?
Here.
We have Quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're just gonna go, um, the agenda has just changed a little bit. So we're gonna go into, I need to, a motion to approve our minutes from January second, our reorganization meeting and regular session on January second, twenty twenty four. Motion? Motion by Mrs. Brusella, seconded by
Second.
Mrs. Farrar. Are there any discussions? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Brusella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Boone?
Yes.
A motion passed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, um, we have Ms. Charlene Peterson here tonight, um, from the New Jersey School Boards, our representative for Essex County, and she's going to present our Code of Ethics presentation. Thank you for being here, Charlene.
Thank you. It is my pleasure. Um, you know, the board is continuing its commitment to train together as a board team. And so, you know, part of how New Jersey School Boards helps recognize the work that boards do is to, um, have a process in place for them to become a certified board. So this board has been working diligently toward that process. So I checked before I came here and the board has twelve of the sixteen credits that are required. So tonight we'll make thirteen. Um, so we are continuing to move through that process. So the board, you know, has four years to earn sixteen credits with each credit essentially being an hour, um, of training. So it's possible, maybe you could earn it by this year, but at the very least next year, but you know, I think, um, and then the boards are recognized at the Spring County meeting. So that would kind of be the, you know, the guidance of when we would be aiming for. Um, so the, the training that we have today is, you know, as mentioned, that boards are required to, um, have ethics training to talk about the, the School Ethics Act every year. Um, so this is just a way then to help fulfill that responsibility. I mean, you know, it, it's not required that it be this level in depth, but it's just good information for the board to have. So just gonna kind of take you through it, um, with the, you know, starting out with a disclaimer that this is not legal advice, that the board receives legal advice from its board attorney. This is just sharing information. Um, and as we look at the, the requirements of the School Ethics Act, um, you know, hope that we would consider that to be the minimum standard that we hold ourselves accountable to, um, and would hold ourselves, you know, to a higher standard than that. Um, so the School Ethics Act be, you know, begins with the, uh, the act itself of kind of guiding our conduct and saying that we need to look at ourselves differently, not as volunteers, but as elected public officials. And with that comes responsibility. And that responsibility is that you have to hold the respect and the confidence of the people that elected you. And then you, and then it looks at our conduct and said that we would have to avoid conduct that would be in violation of the public trust. And then hold us to an even higher standard of saying, even if you've done nothing wrong, but it, there's a justifiable impression to the public that it may look that way, then that's the higher standard then that we are held to. You know, and I had, uh, one time I had a board member say, I feel like I have a hand tied behind my back. And I said, you know what? In a way you do, but that's essentially your responsibility of being an elected public official. So these are the different components that go with the School Ethics Act. So I'm just gonna, um, go through them briefly. So I wanted to point out that some of the provisions apply to board members only. So that's the Code of Ethics and the mandatory training. And then the other two items prohibited acts, which used to be called conflicts of interest. I mean, the disclosure statements not only apply to board members, but it also includes some administrators and the, those administrators that applies to are identified there. Um, so as we look at then the oversight of ethics, the body that's in charge of that, um, is that the School Ethics Commission, and they are appointed by the governor for a three-year term with no more than five from one political party. Um, and it's two board members, two administrators, and then the majority, five members are non-school officials. And so similar to the way we meet monthly, so do they. Um, and essentially then when they meet, they are, um, looking at ruling on, um, issuing advisory opinions, which is, um, you as a school official can ask about conduct or proposed conduct that hasn't taken place yet. And saying, okay, School Ethics Commission, if I were to do this, would you consider this to be a violation of the, the School Ethics Act? Um, and so if it is thought that, um, the rest of us would benefit from the advice that they would give, six of the School Ethics Commission members can vote to make that public and then take away all the identifying information. And then they have that posted on their website and said, okay, this is guidance now that you can use. Recognizing each situation is unique, but at least this provides us some general guidance. So like a, a good example is there was a board that had a high school senior elected to the board. So this, you know, so if the, think about the other board members had all kinds of questions, like what happens if we talk about their friends or, you know, classes they're in or teachers they have, and had a whole list of questions, then that they put before the School Ethics Commission for clarity about whether they would be potential conflicts. And the School Ethics Commission, you know, essentially came back and said, you know what? We're not gonna treat this student any differently than we would treat the rest of you. Whatever would be a conflict for you would be a conflict for this student. So again, just an example of getting, you know, advice before it happens. They also can, um, rule on ethics complaints. So while only a school official can ask for an advisory opinion, anyone who thinks a violation took place can file a complaint. So it can be a board member, it can be a member of the public, it can be a staff. What it can't be is the, the Verona Board of Education as a body. So, um, one of the other requirements we have is mandatory training. So one of the things we don't really realize is that we are the only public officials in the state that have mandatory training. And I know you just went, right? This weekend to fulfill your mandatory training. So it is required in your first term that you are serving as a board member in your first three years of board service. So it used to be that you had a full year to complete that training. And then last year, last, I guess it was March, the rules changed, um, to now require new board members to complete their training within the first ninety days, thinking that it would be helpful, um, to, you know, have new board members up to speed and trained as quickly as possible. Um, so that is, you know, now the standard that we work under. Um, and, you know, so now that they just changed that ruling now to, of, you know, so most boards have an April election. I mean, a November election, we're kind of geared up for that ninety days. And now that they've just changed the ruling that boards can switch to an April election without having to vote on the budget. So now we're wondering how many boards are gonna shift and whether that will impact kind of, you know, how we have to gear up to, to provide that training. So at, in your second year of board service, um, you know, you now then have the full year to complete the training. So that's Governance Two for Finance, third year is Governance Three Student Achievement. And then if you, you know, opt to run again and get elected, every time that you run and get elected, the year following your reelection, then you need to take Governance Four, which is legal update. So it's something that's always different. So regardless, you know, if somebody said they've been on their board twenty years and said like, Charlene, do I really still need to take Governance Four again? And the answer is yes, you do. So, the other thing that we're held accountable to is identifying any potential conflicts that we might have by filling out disclosure statements that would identify any relatives, um, and any, um, potential financial conflicts. So for a new board member and a, a new staff member that might be held accountable, it's within thirty days of either starting employment or taking office. And then for those of us that are returning elected officials, it's by April thirtieth. And so these will come directly from the state. So that the School Ethics Commission, um, you know, we had mentioned that it could rule on ethics complaints. Um, so there are penalties that the School Ethics Commission can impose. Um, and so essentially they just make recommendations and they make the recommendations to the Commissioner of Education then, who actually then is the one that, um, has jurisdiction over the penalties. More often than not, they are in alignment with what the School Ethics Commission recommends, but sometimes they are different. Um, so the, the least restrictive one is a reprimand, which is just kind of a verbal hands slap of, you know, kind of acknowledging that, yes, you did something wrong. Um, the next one is a censure and that's more formal and that a resolution is read, not only like at the state, at your board meeting and all of those places that you just mentioned in the Open Public Meetings Act notice, that, that resolution is posted there as well. Um, board members can also be suspended and it's usually in like a thirty-day increment. We've seen it like thirty days, sixty days. Um, so and not able to participate in board service at all during that time. Um, and then you can be removed from the board. So those are the, the four different penalties that can be imposed. Um, so the next section here are the Code of Ethics, which we had mentioned, are applicable to board members only. Um, so this is what we are held, so when somebody said, did you violate the Code of Ethics? It's looking at these tenants. Um, so in the green box is the actual tenant itself. And then underneath that are the standards, which is essentially if someone did file ethics charges against you and said, okay, you violated letter A, underneath that are the standards then that the School Ethics Commission would use to determine if a violation took place or not. So they would compare the evidence to the standard to make a determination. So, you know, the first one here is really kind of what holds us accountable to being kind of the state's representatives at the local level, you know, saying that we'll enforce all laws, rules, and regulations from the state. And before COVID came, we really had a hard time coming up with any examples of what that might look like. And then once the state started imposing the mask mandates and started imposing other mandates that boards were held accountable to, that this is what, um, you know, this is the reason why we did those things. This is what held us accountable to that. This next one here talks about kind of what our responsibility is or the lens that we look at things. Um, you know, people may come to your board meeting and have concerns about particular grade, a particular school, a particular issue. And you aren't sitting on this side of the board table, have to take that step back and say, I need to look at this through the lens of how does this impact every single student in the Verona Public Schools? Because that's who I'm responsible for. So this is what holds you accountable to meeting the needs of all children. Um, this next one here talks about the state starts identifying our role and saying, okay, board, this is your lane. Your work is policymaking, planning, and appraisal. That's what you do. That's your work. Um, and says also importantly that you have to consult those who might be affected by that. So that's why then we traditionally do two readings on a policy. The first reading puts it out there. Everyone's aware of what it is. And then now I can come back and I can say, okay, board, just so you know, that's how this policy impacts me. So that you can now take that into consideration before you vote the second time to adopt it. Um, the next one here talks about, you know, kind of pretty much New Jersey School Boards mantra, right? Of telling us that we don't run the schools. We know that that's what our superintendent does. We just make sure that they're well-run. And importantly, it says together with our fellow board members. So the way we make sure they're well-run is by doing what was assigned to us in the previous one of our policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Um, this one talks about all of us being held accountable for not taking any private action that could impact the board. And in a few minutes, we're gonna look at the cases from this year where board members were found guilty. And in every single case, it included letter E. It may have included other things, but every single one, um, the, the board member was found guilty of this, of taking independent action and it had the potential to impact the board in some way. So recognizing then that we have to be mindful of what we do, how it impacts this body. Um, here holds us accountable to not surrendering our independent judgment. And again, to me, this goes back to all children, that regardless how you got on the board, who you think you made promises to, whatever, whatever reasons, once you are now on the board, the group that you are held accountable to are all children, all of your students. So, as boards, we know that we are a public body. We do our work in public. But, you know, the state has identified nine different reasons that we may need to go into executive session, to have discussion, and it's typically to protect the, the rights of our students, the rights of our staff, the legal rights of the district. So recognizing then that we, while much of our information is public, some of it is not. It's confidential. And this is then what holds us accountable to maintaining that confidentiality. Um, and sometimes, you know, we don't always realize kind of the, the impact of what happens if we don't honor that commitment. A couple of years ago, one of the cases, there was a board member who somehow like told their family about a student issue. And one of their family members went on social media and posted some information about that student and that issue. And it really ended up being harmful to the student. So you really have to think about the consequences of what could happen based on the information that you have. Um, you know, the other thing that the state said is that we are responsible for providing accurate information. And that's because, you know, there is a perception by the public that you have
Took me in violation of, um, so in this case, someone had forwarded some board communication, um, to township officials. So again, so that independent action and, you know, compromised confidentiality. So a couple of these are using emails. Wanted to go to the third one where it talks about the Chromebooks. And so there was a situation where, um, the district was using MacBooks. Um, and the superintendent had put up like a committee together to, to look at moving forward, you know, a recommendation and the committee, um, came back with the recommendation to continue using MacBooks. And one board member said, well, like, I think we should use a Chromebook. Shouldn't we be looking at Chromebooks? So on their own, then they, and, and all business administrators from other districts contacted vendors. Um, even like had one of their, like administrator support at work doing this on their behalf. So that's essentially kind of the, the, so someone filed ethics charges and so it kind of came back and said, you know, you can express your disagreement at a board meeting, but it's inappropriate to conduct your own private investigation. So that they effectuated plans without consulting those who would be impacted and, you know, potentially place the board at risk. And this one just wanted to, like I said, you know, these are for the board to kind of study later. So they don't want to go through everything in detail. But here's a situation where a board member, um, was um, a, a secretary in a local organization, so like outside of their board work. Um, and I guess it was typical that the, the high school chorus would perform at one of these organizations events. So the board member had, as the secretary of this organization, had asked the principal if the chorus would perform against this year. Principal came back and said, sorry, it's not possible. So what this board member then did is texted the chorus teacher and kind of said like, what do you, it's like, how come, how come you're not, um, how come the chorus isn't performing? So again, the School Ethics Commission came back and said that a request for an explanation from a subordinate was administering the schools, gave appearance that the board disagreed with the administration, and put the chorus teacher in an uncomfortable situation. And then said and was tantamount to an investigation before referring it to the superintendent. So again, just kind of as we kind of think of how the, you know, the logic and the rationale is being imposed. Um, and then in another situation here, that in the district where a board member made a lock-on resolution to change the name of the state to a different name and it kind of created a, a, a firestorm. Um, but, you know, the board did vote to make that change. So a couple of members of the public approached the board member that made that lock-on resolution and said, you know, did you go out to lunch with us and explain to us why you did that? So it, you know, so it turned out then that they were reporting filed ethics charges. Um, and so essentially, um, the School Ethics Commission said, you know what? Once the board makes the decision, only the board should be the one who explained the rationale for, for the decision that the board made. While this person made the lock-on resolution, it was ultimately the board that voted. So it should be the board at a public meeting explaining the rationale for its decisions. And then this is kind of one of the first times too, that we also saw that it caught in that relationship with the administration. And so it also undermined the administration's authority, um, and imposes an unnecessary strain on the board and administrative relationship when the board kind of goes outside of its lane like that. So we had just talked about, sort of the code of ethics that is applicable to board members only. Um, but prohibited acts, which is what used to be called conflicts of interest, um, is that kind of applies not only to board members, but also those administrators that we had identified. And saying that there are situations when we need to recuse ourselves and not take part in discussing um, because of some potential conflict. So usually those conflicts are from a business interest, from a financial involvement, from some kind of a, a financial gain or gift or favor. But then when you look at letter B, it says, and also using your position to secure unwarranted privileges, advantages for employment. Um, and when it says recuse yourself, if there's a benefit to you or to your immediate family, in this letter B, they use the term others to kind of extend who that applies to. So it's more important, did somebody get some kind of a privilege or advantage as a result of being a board member? As opposed to if you're being defined to this specifically relationship. So one of the things, and this is something new that I learned this year, is that typically when a board member had a conflict, it would not be unusual to have them abstaining from voting on it. So what we've learned is that a sense that actually what you should be doing is recusing yourself. And so when you're voting and saying on recusing versus on abstaining, essentially saying that abstaining from a matter is not sufficient to memorialize the fact that a board member has a legal conflict that is not eligible to vote. So this is how we make that distinction. Um, so these are those relationship definitions that the state provides. So saying immediate family members, your spouse or partner, or dependent child residing in the same household. And then a relative is essentially the, the nepotism definition, um, of a relative. So pretty much we, everyone is there upset because, I think, the only relative we saw that's missing um, in this law list, but your cousin can easily be an other, right? If that, that, in that situation has happened. So one of the things that I, and I was just on the phone with someone today going through this chart. So one of the things that the School Ethics Commission did in one of the advisory opinions, and this is actually about two pages long, took every single possible potential kind of relationship there could be in telling me yes or no, whether that, you know, would be a conflict or not. Um, so the, the reason that this, that this is important is it comes into play in a couple of different ways. So one of them is hiring, that a district can't hire the relative of a board member or of a superintendent. And if the relative already works in the district, um, then the administration can't exercise direct or indirect authority over the relative. A board member cannot take part in any employment matter concerning, um, the superintendent or supervisors in the chain of command between the relative and the superintendent. And for those, so that means they can't take part in evaluation or anything. And for those districts that are undergoing a superhuman search, they wouldn't be able to participate in that. It also impacts, um, your ability to participate in negotiations. So if you have a relative that works in the district, you can't participate in negotiations whatsoever. However, if you, your spouse or that, and we, a family member, let's say if you are a teacher in another district, um, you are not able to be part of the negotiating team, you're not able to be aware of what's being negotiated on the board's behalf. But once the board is done, has finished the negotiations, the memorandum agreement's done, the salary guides are done, it's essentially too late for you to have an impact on outcome. Um, then you are able to vote at the very end. And then in that bigger, broader definition, if you have a relative that works in another district somewhere and New Jersey is small enough, right? But almost everyone, basically, others that somewhere, that's a teacher, right? Or works in a, in a district somewhere, saying essentially you are blind to participate in the negotiations, you are able to vote, um, absent any other conflicts. And so essentially they would say that other conflict might be if your family member, um, has heightened involvement. Um, and also, um, you know, one of the guidance for that is sometimes in some communities, the, um, the bargaining units may endorse and provide, um, financial contribution to board members' campaigns when they're running for the board and saying that if that's the case, then you would have to sit off in negotiations, um, at least a year. So these are some of the, these are the, either the advisory opinions or cases that go with the prohibited acts. And I'm not gonna go through these. I just wanted to kind of point out the wording, like in the first one, it's consistent of saying when you would have to recuse yourself, saying that you have to do it from any involved matters related to whatever the, the conflict is. And then in the third one, like it says, it has the potential for conflict, actual or perceived. So again, recognizing that we're looking at sometimes what is that perception? So this is the first time we've seen some guidance, you know, beyond So this is the first time we've seen some guidance, you know, beyond, okay, like we knew that we had a relative that worked in the district and we just talked about the conflict, this is the, you know, participating in matters involving the superintendent with negotiations. But this is not the first time we've seen guidance that it also could extend to your committee assignments and what committees you can be part of. So in this case, the person was the board president and had a relative that worked in the district. And typically most boards, the president is given the authority to assign committee chairs, to assign committee members and saying in this case, that board president would not be able to do that. And any committees that might touch on their relative and also would not be able to serve on those committees. And then the same was also true for a board member who had a relative that worked in the district. And when you look at the committees that they identified, like personnel, negotiations, instruction, finance, that pretty much almost every committee we have, right? Or, or close to it. So you can really see how it can have an impact. In this case, in terms of a conflict, there were two different situations where board members attended executive session meetings of the board. When both cases, they had talked to the board attorney and turned out that it was questioned or found with the violation because of conflicts. And the first one, the board had vacant board seat. One of the people that applied for the vacant seat was the board member's husband. So when the board went into an executive session to talk about the candidates for this vacant seat, the board member went into executive session where they were talking about her husband. In another situation, the board president attended executive session where there was a discussion about an incident that the other board members didn't know who they were talking about because it was just an identification number, but it turned out it was actually this board member's family member. So kind of one of the things that guidance the school ethics commission gave us then is that when, when a member with a conflict goes behind closed doors, it creates a justifiable impression to the public that their trust is being violated. And it was essentially saying that a board member that has a conflict has no more rights than any other member of the public, that it really created an unwarranted or privilege or advantage that other members of the public can't go into executive session with the board. And then said the member's presence could chill, meaning or intimidate or sway the comments and opinions of other members when said that we're essentially responsible for our own actions. So the one of the cases kind of got to this point then of saying, looking at saying, well, I asked my attorney. So, so this is kind of an open ended issue now of saying this advice of counsel defense and saying, okay, that pretty much that these kind of four factors have to be taken into consideration and saying that, and if all of these factors are true, saying it may not exonerate you completely, you may still be found guilty, but it may either, you either may not get a penalty or it might soften the penalty that was imposed. One of the other things that guidance we got from the school ethics commission is about volunteering in the schools. You took it for the thing that that would be a good thing. That's how many people get their start on the board. But the, you know, essentially the school ethics commission said, you know, as board members, we kind of have that, have to have that 30,000 people of the district, not be involved in the day to day operation. So you have to make sure that you're not putting yourself in a situation that would make it hard for you to separate them. So saying that probably the two factors that we look at is what's the degree of involvement you have with staff and students? And then what is the degree of authority that you're receiving directions and order of staff and students? And so saying if you can be mindful of that, then you can volunteer, you know, they gave examples of like reading on Doc from Tuesday, Shaffer on the field trip, kind of non-frequent things. It was kind of got started when a board member's wife worked in the district, she could expand the school place, then this board member would come in and help this fight with all the rehearsals and all the work that goes on for a school play. When the school ethics commission said like, whoa, like that, that's too much. You're in the schools too much. You're giving orders and taking orders from staff and students. And so we have to be mindful of that and said, okay, and also, you know, recognizing that, let's say the rec department may use your school. You can be a coach for the rec department because they have their own budget and their own guidelines, but you couldn't be a volunteer coach for the school's team. They need that separation. In voting, they're just kind of, just wanted to emphasize the point that someone had asked for an advisory opinion, just to kind of prove that point of that letter A of the code of ethics that were held accountable and someone asked for an advisory opinion and said, if I were to vote affirmatively to refuse to implement the new student learning standards for the comprehensive health and P E, would that be a violation? And so the school ethics commission came back and said, it was shown that a school official acted contrary to the laws, rules and regulations promulgated by the state board, that they could potentially be in violation. So again, just kind of making that point. So one of the areas that we really got more guidance this year is on social media. You see all like the number like the C, whatever, those are all different cases and all of those cases, the same guidance was offered and essentially saying that we, you know, as individuals, we don't lose our first amendment rights just because we're a school official. It said that we have to make sure though, that we are guided by, you know, the code of ethics, the school ethics act and saying, could a reasonable member of the public, one question, like did this on flight and how do you determine what that is, right? I said, really not sure if that's up to the school ethics commission, but that a reasonable member of the public perceive that a school official is speaking in their own official capacity for pursuant to their official duties? So, so said that the content matters. If what you're saying, that we need to believe that the reason you're saying this is because you're a board member, then that's what we're going to be looking at. So, you know, the school ethics commission has provided disclaimer that we should be using to make it clear that we're speaking as an individual. And so this is guarded language that they gave us, but said, okay, but if I use a disclaimer, does that automatically protect me from finding me in violation? And based on what we just saw before, said, no. Again, it goes back to the content, but said it does help clarify the capacity in which you're speaking. So then what would cause me to be in violation if I had a disclaimer? And again, it's based on the content. If a reasonable member of the public could perceive that you're speaking in your official capacity or pursuant to your duties, then it's then could make the disclaimer inadequate and of no force or effect. So taking that into consideration and saying, well, how about if I don't use a disclaimer? Does that automatically make me guilty? And then if what I'm saying, there's no connection to my board work, then, you know, then, then I'm fine. And said, and must I use the exact disclaimer? And said, the failure to parrot the exact language will not mean that you didn't use appropriate disclaimer. Like I said, that's kind of more guidance and information that we've seen in the past. Did I skip? And then this one was a, a case that, or an advisory opinion that someone had asked for. And in this town, there were, I guess, different Facebook and different social media groups that had conversations about the, the school district. And so this board member said, well, how about if we just put them all in for one, kind of one group? And it would be the Q and A between the parents and the board and I'll be that board member that then will help monitor this page. So, so the school ethics commission came back and said, okay, like the community is aware of your status as a board member would likely attribute any statement from you as being in that capacity of, you know, on behalf of the board. So it would be futile to disclaim your speech. And then I thought this last sentence was kind of telling, it said, even if you only ever provide links to publicly available information, it's possible that it would not immunize you from being a subject of an ethics complaint. So really kind of showing that standard that we are held to in this form. So one of the other things, you know, for those members that are running for the board, typically would have like a campaign Facebook page, it's open as a counseling website. So again, just clarifying that, once you're elected, it's no longer appropriate to have any kind of a social media account that identifies you as a board member. Someone had asked if, if I just like or share something, does that constitute a violation? And again, it goes back to that, what's the content, right? And that there were a couple of instances where someone filed ethics charges against a board member because things they posted were so horrible and so egregious that like someone just felt like they would compel the file of ethics charges. So the school ethics commission said, you know what, like if we took those tenets, if we took those standards, there's not really anything here that we can connect them to is to say, yes, you violated, you know, ethics charges, but you know, kind of saying that you should refrain from inappropriate communications that have no place in the educational setting. And then it said that essentially your, your real judge is the public. Where they choose not to elect you then next time, if you felt that you were not the best one about who's on earth. So kind of enclosing here of saying that we, whereas boards, we should make sure we're aware of and conflicts that board members have, recognize that our board attorney is the person that we would go to for any questions on ethics issues. And then the school ethics commission said that not knowing is not a good excuse. And so the Jersey School Board, every Wednesday, publish the school board notes that pop to your email that will provide you with updates and changes so that we, you know, that we can be apprised of what's going on. And then just kind of wanted to close with, again, this parting thought of kind of the eternal, the honor and the responsibility that comes with being a board member and saying that if we ignore the ethical standards that we were required to uphold, that when we do that, it not only threatens the integrity of the board, it also unnecessarily compromises district personnel. And so first, it's the very purpose for which we were elected to serve the needs of this school district and our students. So we really need to hold ourselves accountable to that. So we wanted to thank you for being a patient audience. If you haven't been the board members, have any reflections at all from me?
Thank you, Sharon. I actually do have a question for you. Thank you again for coming out. So my question is regarding social media for board members, like you said. So me, my, me personally, I like to share on my Board of Education. When I started running, I created a page on social media and I usually will share information, school play, games, if the team wins something, I usually share that out. They don't really comment, I'll just put congratulations or something. So are you, you're basically saying that that when our volleyball team won the state championship, I commented, I've, you know, posted a picture, that should not happen on personal or even our page that we created for running as a member?
So, so the guidance, you know, definitely stated that you shouldn't have a page that inherently identifies you as a board member. So on your personal page, again, it could just be, again, a reasonable number of the public would have to say, are you speaking out now? Is this part of your board? Part of your board work? So I guess it could be innocuous enough, but it's.
One, you, you mentioned the, the training from over the weekend. One takeaway is nobody's going to complain if you're saying something positive. So if you're saying great John volleyball team, who's, who's really going to be mad about that? Now, if you said something kind of irrational about what was going on in the game, that might be wrong. At least that was my takeaway from broader training.
So again, the only judge is really the, the school ethics commission. I mean, and like I said, each situation is treated separately. So you would get advice from your attorney on, you know, on that situation or any situation that you think you're not sure about.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Question?
Yeah, just one thing, again, coming off of last weekend's conference, I just really want to thank you, Shirley, and the NDA SBA for all the efforts that you do. I, I was there with a hundred other people from all the way up from Sussex County, all the way down to Salem County. And the impact that you folks have is truly inspiring and people running it were deeply engaged and one, the number one thing that they kept pushing or highlighting, excuse me, is that we were there for the benefit of the students and everybody was aligned on that. And it was really encouraging to see that spirit. So thank you.
Thank you, and we'll see you in two weeks for our exchange.
Wonderful.
For September 15th. Thank you. Thank you again, Kelly. Moving on to our agenda, we have our superintendent's report from the State of Happy.
Good evening. Thanks for the reminder that we do have a comment, make sure we switch on your microphone. We've had a complete, I think that's been a very hard year to tell me, to remember to turn it on after last.
As long as we push the button, it works.
Right, right. We have Mr. Ricky, he'll come. So Mr. Ricky, I might have to have you click some links for me, if that would be okay? So before I start with district goals and a little bit of an update, I'm trying to give you a, a couple of other pieces of information. Even following our Q sat preparation for our quality, single accountability continuum, that our onsite monitoring and self-monitoring by Department of Education. We received our onsite district monitoring date, it's March 6th. And so we still have a little bit of time to clean up anything that is left that has to be organized or monitored. And we look like we're in fairly good shape for that. Another very large report that is due on February 15th is the civil rights data collection. And just to give you an example of what is required of this civil rights data collection. There are two collections, there's a district collection and then there's a school collection. So the same information is collected from all of the schools, with the exception of the high school, there's a whole host of different types of information that's collected. What, what we do for our, for the district collection is primarily enrollments, gender, you know, I have to break out by gender, ethnicity, number of special education students, number of our English language learners or multi, multi-lingual learners and students that are working under a project or a plan. That's a pretty small piece of it, probably takes an hour or two to do that, to do a piece with regard to the school. I'll give you an example, just from preschool. So anything kind of extrapolating what they're asking us to provide then. So just in terms of enrollment, and this will be for the preschool, which we treat as a separate school. And then we have to do this for all schools. So males enrolled, males enrolled that are Hispanic, American, Indian, Native Alaskan, Asian, Native American, Pacific Islander, black, white, two more races, same thing for females. And then general levels of students that with disabilities that are involved. Then they go through the same group, males, females, change with ethnicities for those students that are also English language learners, also have an IEP, student disability, or could be final four. And it goes through, it goes through that for each school and then. And they're looking for this year for the first time, it will be for non-binary student indicators, general enrollment for all students in any school programs, what programs we have, for getting the talented, do enrollment, kind of recovery. And again, it breaks out by male, female, on ethnicities in three tables. We do it for general education, all students and then students that are English language learners, we put students with five oh four or IP. Then for they want courses in the class, this is mostly isolated out to middle school and high school. And they're looking for students in more than algebra one, in grade, algebra one, geometry eighth grades and contact in each of those categories. At the high school, it's more complicated because it's algebra one, algebra two, geometry and higher mathematics, biology, chemistry, physics, higher science. Any IP, any dual enrollment, we had international bachelor laureate, same thing across the board. Again, for all of those groups. SAT, ACT information, school support staffs or staff, applicants of our staff, how many PhDs, how many people have master degrees, school security staff, retention at each school, interdisciplinary athletics, student discipline, they want membership, suspension, expulsion, parental punishment, but we're on state for all these things. That's an easy one, you can just not follow, but refer off the law enforcement, for supervising arrests, any offenses, harassment, intimidation, bullying, restraint and detention. And then there's one for justice facilities and that has to deal with. And then all internet access devices. This is a huge report that took many, many. This is a huge report that took many, many hours and um Mr. Colage and Zachman and I have begun uh pulling information out of JAXIS and trying to um organize and collect and verify that our data is correct. Because it's interesting, you put data into this report that's not accurate, it tells you it's not accurate, if you already have it. No, just, but it's, so it's a huge report, due on February 15th. And because of COVID, we all connected to it again. Usually it's under two years, um now it's about, we're making up. So this report is 2021, 22, and that's 2022. That's a bit, and some really good news. Um, of one more thing, negotiations process is underway. Um, Mr. Cruz has been relatively being scatter grams and all the information that our two associations need to uh sit down at the table and start negotiating. Is our goal to finish negotiations prior to the summer, so we can verify before teachers and principal planning and summer. Uh, thing is, we had two students that are recognized, there were music students that are recognized um uh to perform at uh um state individual uh, you know, um competition, I don't know, which are important. Max Delta uh was, is the 2024 New Jersey All States Seminary Fan. Uh, in Mississippi, he missed the first part at one point, and he played the balance. And Dylan Gray plays soon, and Max were also admitted in 2024 originally done song. So this is a short presentation, I think there's only uh maybe ten or eight slides, and now um it's our mission, this is our mission statement, our core, the other one. Our goal is to empower students to cultivate their intellectual property, and so it's a little spark ability. Um, so we think our district goals to our strategic plan. And we have four, four areas, uh including student outcomes, our achievement, uh one developing twenty percent few students who are following curvy. Social and emotional learning, diversity, equity, and belonging, inclusion, belonging, and uh community and school related. So starting with goal area one, student achievement. Uh, basically, we, we, it's in some different uh goals this year. So it's been the habit of, of the principals here to develop goals. Um, like for instance, before elementary principals, they were developing goals together. And that's been what they've been doing for a while now. Um, I switched it up a little bit because my learning about writing goals is really about baseline data. It's in our school that they're, they have different data. So the goals are, they're both about school improvement, so you'll see there's differences in the uh target percentage points increases. So we're using uh the NJ uh Student Learning Assessment, which is based on the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. And most of the ranges of percent, percentage point increases is between five and fifteen. And the reason that there's such a wide range is if you have students, a group of students at a grade level that are performing um above seventy, probably eighty percent, or well above the state, it's hard to move that move higher. So the better they're doing, it's harder to push them. We have a group of students that are performing significantly lower than where they should be or lower than the state. That percentage point increase is up to fifteen percent. So depending, so it's really five, fifteen, ten, there's a couple of eight percent depends depending on looking at um the student, specific student data. And the action plan and strategies in action and timeline are often eliminated by a great scan, telling them about my story. So, um, Mr. Bush, could you put on that, Mr. Ball, an action plan strategy? So for instance, in Brockdale School, you can see that a grade three could be signed with a six point seven percent of our students met or exceeded the grade above standards. So we're going with a five percent, five percentage point increase. So our goal for grade three broke down this year is that we get our students up to ninety one point seven percent. Um, that's we oversee, they took math, the math growth uh tests, they're taking them this week, so I don't have data for you. That would be our mid, mid-year progress. So uh by the time we meet again in February, I shouldn't have it, if not, first meeting, definitely the second. Um, we can't close out those uh macros, so we can see the score for all the students that made mine. So for instance, if you could scroll down. You look at, you look at um like uh for Forest Avenue, fifty three, the baseline is different than, than uh Brockdale. The, the different percentage points, and that's true of all schools. So that gives you an idea of uh map on charts where those holes are. If you can go back to the presentation.
So we go off of that. I'm going to say to separate, I'm going to be about what's now standing, the rating for thirty eight, ten, and no better. Or, I think you want to say, have you looked at why? Are, are you doing that?
Oh, no, no, yeah, no, it's a good question. We are, we are looking at. Yeah.
Over here, since I just won't be dying for it, I'm saying, well, I'm trying to get it in, so then I'm well. I've added it to the floor, so then if I broke down the numbers in the forest, and some of the higher scores are, that I call the COVID.
So, one of the things we're looking at for that is we're looking at, um first what we do is we look at before, so Mr. uh, for instance, for math, we suggest about math. Mr. Stevenson put together a tremendously detailed spreadsheet for the teaching of more that. Looking at what was the standard, what was the type of questions that we know were asked, based on the evidence that we received from the state. How often did those questions appear? Have our students ever seen those types of questions before? Because the first time students see the question, might actually not be standardized by us. And also where are the curriculums found? Right? So if it's down after the test and it's something that's, uh, I think there's a good number of, of items on that test, then we maybe need to move that curriculum on, as long as it makes sense with three blocks of spells and why not? So um, we're, we're looking at that now, we're looking at whether or not uh it's bound in our curriculum. For instance, I was talking to one of the third grade teachers and in the unit amount that they're doing, some of what they're doing are fourth grade standards. We have to ask ourselves, is that a sacrifice of the third grade seat? So there's a lot of work that goes into uncovering why the scores of these schools are different. Or what, or how we can bring our scores out with public. Show you the action plan so you can get a sense of that. We quickly have a question.
I do. So when you, when you, when you say um in the third grade classes, this more frequent, is that the, the program that we use by that, not our curriculum?
And the program that we use. But our curriculum is, is written based on that program. So, okay, so we're, these are all things that we're going to have to tweak going forward. Um, and the math and mind drug standards have to be rewritten, as you know, anyway, this summer, to reflect the new standards that were adopted by the state.
So then would we consider when, when we're looking at the new standards and comparing that to our program? Just really focusing on the New Jersey state standards, even if it's in that program, you don't have to, so it's right.
Or if we, if we wanted to stretch that to the fourth grade standards, make sure you're hitting on the third grade person. Or you can usually look at, for the most part, the standards, especially the mind drugs more than that, it's the same thing. They can do inference every year and just gets more and more in depth. So if you're hitting the fourth grade standard in the third grade and it encompasses the third grade standard and stands that, that's not as much of a problem as the math is. And, uh, you know what, um Can you hear it? Go back into that whole. And then scroll down all the way down below elementary, all four schools, and you see my breakdowns, you can click that link. Can you go, we'll talk about it in a minute. So for instance, with uh the, the LA strategies and actions uh that we are doing to address the deficiencies that we're seeing, first of all, we started out the year doing these standards um unpacked. Right? Teachers are unpacking standards, they're asking themselves at, at each other, what does this standard say? Sometimes standards are very complicated, sometimes they're very simple. Sometimes they're five or six learning targets, and the specific standard, we are also asking our teachers to determine taxonomic levels. So what level of cognitive mean is, is this standard out? Is it simple recall, remembering, executing, kind of like that? Easier, um, and I remember this standard to, okay, I remembered it, now do I comprehend what it means? Am I analyzing that and thinking it's that, that picks up, or ultimately, am I asking students to um do a cognitive big complex? Is, is it novel utilization? Are we asking kids to generate hypothesis? Test that hypothesis, and that always sounds like science, but you can do that in, in some comparative, and then um execute and defend your, your hypothesis or your argument. So if you're teaching the standard, but you're not teaching at the taxonomic level, it's going to be tested out. That's the other thing you have to look at when you're covering. Are we teaching this at the same level it's going to be assessed on? Then we're, uh, we're doing, we did a deep dive and, and our supervisors are working with grade level meetings, looking at individual student data. And looking at those students, like for instance, we had a, a, a large number of kids at one of the schools that I mentioned before, that are within five points of passing. That's, that's not a big effort move. So if we look at those individual students, let's see, where are they deficient on this task? You can work with those, it's, that's what differentiate instructions, different routes, you work with those students on where they were deficient. And try to move that into the next. So you look at your kids on the class, you're looking to move everybody. But those kids that are on the class may be easy because it's only a couple, that could be two test questions. That they, that you take them from, I'm approaching district level standards to I'm meeting district level standards. So we're also looking at, uh, so for the language, we are uh using the state rubers to do our writing assessment, because we only use macro for reading and uh math. Um, we are providing specific professional development to our teachers in both mathematics and um uh and BLA in uh, sorry, in writing and reading, as well as instruction. So rather than, so everybody's getting some professional development instruction and reading the standards and look at uh instruction differently and go and scroll. And then uh we're looking at small, so we're looking at implementing tier one strategies, tier one means what do we do for kids in our classroom, if you have them in the classroom, what, how are we intervening to push them and stretch, to do, to go stretch them? And of course, we're, we're calling it peer collaboration, we're moving toward conventional learning communities. And then constantly monitoring progress for these goals, so that we can tweak them along the way, they're not static. Uh, if we see something that we didn't see initially that teachers need, we can actively do the strategies. So basically, the elementary level strategy for math is similar. And then I, and then we have middle and high school strategies, but this is the way it's worked out. You all have this document, I'm going to post it to Mr. Post's site, I'm going to change the strategic plan, the strategic plan slash districts. Any mobile, so uh our, our, our community can see what we're working on. So if you can go back into district goal. This Reggie?
Cause, sorry.
Um, along the bottom, there are two tabs, and we're looking at um student achievement for four one. Four areas two through four are on that next page. But we can actually go back into the um the presentation, the slide down. Scroll down, I'll go to the next slide. So goal areas two through four were twenty first century skills and positive learning. Uh, social and emotional learning and diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging. And goal four was building strong relationships for our community and uh school community relations. So these come directly from our strategic plan, as do the student achievement goals, which are specific with uh uh gains on our state measured test. So our goal was to implement the gifted and talented, we call it academic enrichment, and the second talented program, grades one through five. Um, we pull out for, for two hours of reconstruction and um the uh G T teacher, which is in the garden. Um, we have, we were looking to uh have an inclusion model at our elementary schools. And a life skill program at, at the high school. Right now, we have uh implemented written curriculum program, hired a teacher and have these everybody uh instruction in gifted and talented areas. We do have a pilot inclusion model in three of our four schools at the elementary level in grade three. We are continuing that in three, four, and looking to continue to have it briefly, so we will, we will come with that in that regard. And a life skills um class uh at the high school. Who has a classroom that is just about finished. Um, with regard to the kitchen, we've been providing the programs since September, but the kitchen is in cabinets and countertops are, are coming, they're in some feel like in remote, but they're being worked out right now. And uh, we have a curriculum that is written and the, what we would, our vice skills students at the high school. For goal area three, uh, we have a goal to uh change um E S S to Care Plus and J, Care Plus and J provides different mental health, tier three supports than effective school solutions or E S S did. Um, they have three clinicians with Care Plus. Provides up to about forty more students have availability for this service. Uh, than we have with uh effective school solutions, and Care Plus provides supports for families in addition to students when we get our um, with school, that's what I'm just. Um, we are, our another goal is to use of work, New Jersey School Pride Initiative. Uh, specifically utilizing their survey to create working groups, to generate action events based on the survey results. So we, that is a goal that has begun, it is just getting started. We did do the survey last year with students, staff, and uh parents. We are going to implement the survey again this year to see if we see any improvement. Uh, and we are working on community groups, Mrs. Ackerman is, is uh the chairperson of this particular committee. And uh, she's working on having students on, maybe uh specifically at middle school, high school. So they can have input into how we create action buys to improve school, define it in our um. And third one, let's do this for our character education program. Uh, that is not, we, we do currently a little program called People Pack that our social workers implement in the elementary school. And we have conflict resolution and peer mediation, which are very good things to have. We're not looking to get rid of conflict resolution, peer mediation, but I said several times, I think to this board that is reactive, that after there's already been conflict and communication, uh, mediation or mediation. Um, we're looking for a program that's going to prevent. We love to not need peer mediation and, and conflict resolution going forward. Uh, so what we did was we looked at about five different programs and we selected uh the positivity project, which is linked in the uh spreadsheet. So if you're, if you're interested in going and looking at that program, the link to the website is in there. And we're starting uh in February, NHBW across all three grade level, uh smaller to teacher to begin to implement that program. And uh, we will make, and also in the elementary school, we'll make a determination uh schools uh as to whether or not that's a preschool program. Uh, it's a pretty comprehensive program and really well done. And then the last goal for area three is creating environment diversity, equity, belonging. It, without conclusion, got started with staff and students. This is actually also same goal that's found on our DDI action plan from last year after the um red record resolution report. And we have on February, I'm sorry, yeah, February eight, we have uh a group of people coming from Atlanta that are going to be working with students, staff, and parents over a two day period. So similar to what was, I'll look at Sheldon the last year, um, we have our time putting our schedule, or putting his schedule to our schedule. To Dr. Miller, to get us to go down, uh, and others. Actually, I think, and it was a teacher as well, this is a group of teachers. Say they will be able to reach more of our school community, because they're coming up with five people. And the last goal is community and school relations, and this uh has been a goal, uh, this was the goal of mine last year, the improved communications. In general, but also using social media, um, just mentioned that um when we look at our reports, we see there are When we look at our reports, we see there are many, mine is that under forty percent of our parents read the email or the posts that we sent out. So a really important post, I will follow up with a mobile call, we'll get a call basically saying the same thing in the post. Try to get that information out, I think it's really important. Um improve the use of district and school websites, the district website has been uh improved, we're still working on school website. Uh Mr. Velasquez uh. Who ours. Reports our current website was purchased by another company. So we're using this opportunity to have a template, look, easy to navigate. We are not just bringing everything over to our website, adopting it as a new website, we are building the product. So that it will be consistent between district, the high school and middle school, all three elementary schools will have consistency problem. And uh we're going to make every effort to make sure that our posts and information are timely. That they're removed when they're no longer timely and that they provide information that parents. And um one of the goal of the human strategy planning was to encourage our students to volunteer on project committee. I will report that we have two students that were named to be part of our commission. Um as uh Luke Stewart's, uh we have one student on the. Control of education uh committee and. One other, it's in the, it's in the section. And the last, but to offer current counties, such as, this is probably the result that we're nor isn't necessarily the list that we were able to do this year. Academic academies, we've had a math, our math academy, our literacy academy, uh we've had a uh. Academic achievement gifted and talented parent academy. We did um positive use of social media or actually. What not to do on social media and online uh with digital mindfulness. And uh we have um, I'm going to be putting together um. A presentation for generative, gen- generative, generative artificial intelligence. And how it should be used in classroom block districts across the country or banning it. This is going to be a ubiquitous piece of equipment, the way the calculator is, the way spell check is, and now grammar is. So we can try to say it doesn't exist, we ban access to it, or we can teach kids how to use it to improve their understanding. Just like when we started with uh calculators many years ago, people were like, no, calculator is going to make kids not be able to think about math, we're not going to learn math. We now are requiring students to do things that having a calculator doesn't simply make you use them, so, okay. It does raise, or this will raise the bar, uh but we need focus with kids on, it's not about output. Or products, it's about using the full. So um that is my presentation on school goals. And we will come back in a couple of weeks for the little other update and we'll continue to update you to the end.
Uh one question. We started by talking about the uh two side view, did we get our I D piece for you? How was it passed?
I had asked three times.
That that's time.
Uh nobody in Essex County has survived like.
Just a comment and question, I know I really appreciate the effort you made on AI uh. The world, I sit on an AI steering committee for my corporation and. And the the meaning is, it's not going to do the reporting, but it is an awesome tool and every day, every week. Uh we find something new exists while those try to do our job, but. Um the question I have, uh back to uh twenty first century uh careers, um. I know this probably for a few years, but where do we stand on the relationship with the V O tech? And 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 specifically, and I know on the goal, we talked about communicating the value and potential of that at an earlier age. Junior high, but um kind of being a new guy here, I'm just curious where we stand on that.
So we have an obligation under the law to encourage and explain and teach kids. That were compatible for V O tech, so the fact that it wasn't happening was uncomfortable, uh but we're, we are in hell. Uh we actually have four kids this year that are getting ready to apply for V O tech for next year. We have more students getting, the issue with V O tech here in Essex County is that our Essex County V O tech. Doesn't compare to Bergen County or Morris County, so there's, uh we have more kids that go for Marshall Bay than for Hobay. Or they go to Say, Say County is also very good, they go to Say County side, uh we have two students attending Say County. Back in the school, what was it?
The biggest, oh sorry, I don't know. I don't think the, I think the kids that really need V O tech, I know her could create the evidence. Should be up here to go there, but that's the biggest threat to our budget.
It is.
It's been voted by far.
And I think the reason for that, for the wondering, is that V O tech is is uh. There's a cost, you know, sometimes it can be up to fifteen thousand dollars per student in school district pay. So we still are, we still have them um the part of our district, but. But it doesn't, if our cost per pupil was fifteen thousand dollars, it doesn't really cost us fifteen thousand dollars to educate that child. So you move a child, and one child into into a grade level, it's not going to cost us fifteen thousand dollars because we open a classroom, we are a central. But if you pull a child out, now you're taking fifteen thousand dollars and giving it to another entity, it it does.
And you're busing there.
And we're busing, yes.
Is there any opportunity for partnerships for organizations that need work, need collections or whatever? Uh to help.
That's a good question, I'm seeing you here and know what's in the area, because that's definitely a good community, whether or not there's uh. Uh any willingness to, and and whether it's legal.
Yeah, well, that's.
That's a set one for that, but yeah, I'm not sure, there's a workaround.
You see with the new programming development special, I have um that there there are community partnerships with both. Uh both for me and potential employer, um but I I think unless. Our top major standard, uh we free the subject being taught, uh I I know that at the V O techs, they have much more established partnerships. Um but with respect, right, um I I do know that the one that do program, so I didn't see that.
Thank you.
You have some more questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to our business management report, Mr. Chris.
All right, evening everyone, uh in finance this month, uh we do have uh tonight our November and December Secretary, Chairman and Secretary Report. After we reported they're all in agreement, uh right now, at this time of year, in the street, they're extremely busy for the business office. Uh as uh Miss Duffy mentioned, we're uh collecting and prepping uh for uh. What bargaining negotiations along with budget prep. Uh recently, we finished our mid-year uh budget review with the family office. Uh the process in that review is uh really looking at our fiscal efficiencies in comparison to districts. Uh similar in size and type uh across the state. Um also, uh we're in the middle, um as I mentioned, uh preparing for fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five's on budget. Uh this is the deceiving myself, uh we're going to need uh continuing to review, meaning early in February, uh. I'm ready for our next meeting to uh present a new preliminary budget, um which is actually an overarching overview. Uh the budget process, um and once the governor releases the state figures um later in February. Uh we'll be able to use that uh to present publicly the tentative budget for two thousand twenty four, twenty five uh at our March twelfth meeting. Uh that concludes my, I'll give this back, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Moving on to our student representative one, Rashad.
So uh this week, the school district, we're running the inclusive schools programming. Uh so that would be twenty second through twenty sixth, including spirit needs, learning apps, buying forms play. And uh programming at the uh lower level, so children's been instrumental in pushing in those lessons and providing. That programming and information to really allow for me to sort of pick off these. Uh coming up on February third, the Nito and Mandarin Club have organized the annual Chinese New Year celebration. Which will be held in the V H S in the gym, and thought that the community could relax here, but it's just down here this year. Uh so six thirty on February third. And thank you to students home and Jack Laxton for coordinating student council involvement and support in that as well. Community invited, it'll be performances from students and professionals who have been behind, you know, should be on. And uh lastly, student council will be holding the annual twenty formal, January eighth for high school students, and uh that's.
Thank you. Any more questions? Moving on, we are going to go into our community reports, first up is athletics. Would you like me to do that?
I'd be lovely.
So we did meet on um last week. Our winter sports are starting to uh begin their counter tournaments. H B W, there was an issue uh with the flooring at the gym, it was very slippery. So um that might be important, I don't know if we have some of them around, but that I think. May have been rectified, so that's been, that's been a problem for a while, or like an ice skating rink for the basketball team. Uh the, our senior nights are coming up for winter sports, so swim has their. Uh swims uh January twenty fifth, hockey will be on January twenty eighth, wrestling January thirty first. Girls' basketball and winter cheer will be February first and boys' basketball on February twelfth. So congratulations to all the seniors as well, this is their last sport to be playing for the year. Um field trips uh for March fourth to the sixth uh is Decca. I'll be attending that. And on personnel, we will be approving tonight, we have a boys assistant lacrosse coach. Kyle Matthews, and we will be also approving our football assistant coaches, which is um. The head assistant Chris Ferrara, assistant Dean Romano, assistant Dean uh Matt Raffi, Kirtelli, and assistant Steven Brown. Uh thank. It actually, there is one of the um, well.
No.
Any questions? Thank you. Moving on to education.
Thank you. Uh so, Mr. Sheppe spoke so much of what we discussed for our education today, so I will just very briefly go through. Um in in social education, again, yeah, this is fully. Uh this theme is strong, meaning which is wonderful, uh at the middle school, there'll be an assembly, Mr. Jordan Toma will come and be speaking about. Um I think it's called, no, 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 I'm just kidding, I'm just. Yeah, so that'll be at the middle of one, Wednesday was a wonderful lot of the kids. Uh preschool will be holding their open house and parent meetings scheduled for Friday for current preschool students going into kindergarten. Um so that is an important meeting for any preschool, current preschool parents to attend um for for uh conversation. Um about entering into kindergarten, um they're continuing ongoing evaluations for students who are referred from early intervention programs to the preschool program. Um again, just piggybacking on Mr. Sheppe said, uh continuing with the uh in-class inclusion in grade three. Of along to grade four next year, also RS and Ethan Brown, projected to also continue at Brookdale. Um and uh Ms. Simmons is working on projections for next year, um to continue that that program. Life skills program, kitchen is underway, we're almost there with that, um as far as home instruction goes, we're continuing. Um to continue with the procedures that we had implemented to support collaborative approaches for students who stand working together with the home instruction. We currently have ten students uh receiving home instruction, um care plus. Um did some training, risk assessment training uh with district counselors and admins in district, which was um very beginning. For for uh, it's great meeting, um. So continuing by the track of planning for I C S, as far as Jan Ed goes, um curriculum council. Met, um and they are beginning to discuss some course proposals for twenty four, twenty five. Um there is professional development coming up on February eighth, where teachers in the district will be. Uh presenting to each other on best practices. Um again, piggybacking what Mr. Sheppe said, March seventh, eighth, Jared Latella, the consultant firm will be coming in to provide professional development. Um customized workshops for teacher best practices to support, and there'll be that community um. Invitation to attend a session on March seventh, so district communication will be going out for that. Uh math assessments are underway throughout the district, family reports can be expected to be home by either the end of the month or early uh February. Um. There are, we discussed before the letters P D, um which is like a city. Program that there are cohorts of teachers attending, um so they're continuing that P D, there's some math P D happening. Continuing with the mentoring, the teacher orientations, um and then there, which is a lot of. Uh agenda tonight for approval, um we are going out as district again for the second time for the New Jersey High Impact Tutoring Grant. Which um is offered through the state as a grant for fourth and fifth graders, provide extra support. Um for the students who need it, so fingers crossed that, that can turn around with the secret grant.
Well, I spoke to the person who reviewed our grant and got feedback as to what was deficient in the initial grant. So um committee that's doing it, Mrs. Kohler, Dr. Miller and Mr. Stevenson have that feedback. And they're running through tomorrow to make sure that they have everything that they need for uh to make sure we get that.
That would be amazing, that would run from March twentieth to December twenty twenty four, including summer month, so it's a nice um intervention for for students.
I have a question, so um there's a lot of information gave, uh I plan on talking about um during new on business item V eight on our agenda. Um I want to know during the uh education committee, was this discussed?
Decisions?
Yeah.
No.
Um and is it fair that the assistant superintendent would win that setup escape, does that mean?
The committee?
Yeah.
Yes.
Very good, that's awesome, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions, Paul? Moving on to finance. You do, okay, well, I didn't see you on this one, okay, thank you.
That too, uh Mr. Cruz hit a lot of the the highlights, um but this. Uh under all business, the playground update, our rebound mediation in on one of it. And so hopefully, we will accomplish resolution, that will allow us to fix and or replace. If the playground that we spent a lot of money on. And then our time clocks have been installed, they're being used and overtime being tracked and monitored, so that's. Uh going to help us um in terms of stepping and saving on overtime hopefully. And then one of the things that we did discuss fairly briefly was the uh. It has, and this is a more broader discussion that you ought to have at some point, if if we want to opt for the national school one for where. Um the governor again raised the limits, the income limits, so now I think they went up off. About eight thousand dollars and about seventy seven, sixty eight thousand dollars. Uh we're down to four, if we can make that or under the qualify tour, it's free lunch in Jersey, there's going to be twenty meter, it's all free. Um you know, again, we only have about twenty two, twenty five students that currently. Uh have to fill out paperwork and get free lunch through the school system uh that we pay for. But just this increase along with the ed people and then at the ed, more residents in the community. To um to have them developed, and it all have, we can inspect. Uh and that's again, given these people that are applying, of course, we won't know. Who is coming until they show up, uh the first way is in the office, and I don't want to say that, that, I apologize. The first group of families that every weekend are scheduled to be in in August. Um again, we won't know uh how many, even our school age. For for all in other communities, um you know, so but this is something that we should keep in um. Keep in the back of our mind, if we are going to opt for next year, we have to do that sometime April, uh we may want to. We may want to take here and collect data and see. If, you know, where we fall. Because it can attack some funding that's on on a school level. By our SCA's and other. S A's that utilize lunches and stuff on reason. So it's just something that it's not as as simple as one would want it to be. But we just have to balance all of it. But I think that is about it. Anything I missed?
Uh, no, no, other than, and I forgot where we came down on this question. With her, the school lunch, it's not something we can opt in and then leave. The money on the table, which we decide we don't want it. Is it, once you're in, you're in, correct?
And it would just, it's involved in doing RFPs and getting, you know, potentially getting a new. Lunch provider. It's special requirements that go into opting to network. It's a bit complicated.
And it doesn't include the SCA's from continuing to run their fundraisers. It's just, it limits what they can serve and this portion size and. They have that whole brain to look at and.
I do have a quick question. So I want to make sure that I understand this. Currently. For any child who does receive free juice lunch, the district pays out of pocket because we have a private vendor?
So currently, all families are eligible for free lunch for district sponsors that costs. So for example, the cost of lunch for the years, even dollars for each of the, each of those students. Bringing out about one percent of participations, twenty-five students in the entire district. That, as Mrs. Rosella actually mentioned, that actually submitted the application. They qualify based on the the current eligibility. The board does sponsor that cause.
Right. So then if we're, if we're anticipating increased amount of students, we can also anticipate that that. Amount involved significantly in our small budget.
Correct. So if, if the data, the data trend actually goes upward. Sustainability wise going forward, it will be beneficial for the board to shift over to the national school. Because then we no longer sponsoring and covering that cost.
And then once we get four percent, we're obviously not.
So once, yeah, once we get four percent, we'll have no choice but to participate and be part of the program.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our building to brown community report.
Yes, Val mentioned the playground issue, a couple other quick items. We have two custodial positions that are open, one at HBW and Brown. There are two suggested hires for that. That we will be voting on shortly. And then also the situation involving the press box on the high school football field. We expect that to be closed officially now at the end of the school year, post-graduation. We are awaiting feedback from the architect on proposed changes to the plans. And the expectations for this will be about ten to twelve months for twelve completion.
Thank you very much. Committee report. Anyone have any questions? Moving on, we are going to open up the podium for public comments on agenda action items only. So if there's anything that we will be voting on that you would like to speak on, you come to the podium, say your name, and you have three minutes. Moving on to our discussion items, new business and old business. Mr. Walker, we could start with you.
Yeah, so I want to talk about B eight. On our agenda, which is under the education section, and I'm always going to be in favor of. Awarding cycles to teachers that go and do work for students or student groups outside of the contract and service time. But the one, the one thing that bothers me is I see a whole lot of administrators. Getting assigned responsibilities here. But you know, it's ever since twelve me when there's administrators are getting stipends for thinking that they're really aren't part of their job, they're part of their job in a whole lot of schools. And I think this board's done a really good job kind of limiting and reducing the amount of. What I can say unnecessary stipends to administrators. But I see this whole list of people that aren't getting extra compensation for duty and then. Of the the three stipend positions, one of them is for the McKenney mental homeless, of course, I want to make sure those kids get what they need. But it's, it's, it doesn't sit well with me that the, the person that's making the. The education committee agenda and talking to the members of the board isn't reviewing the, the. This particular document with that committee when they're, when they're the one that, you know, one of the two, two, one of the two people that's getting compensation for this. I, I think that, you know, I've, I've been a superintendent principal for about eight or nine years now and. I've had one title line thing I've had to do. I can imagine, and since I've been on the board of Brown, I could only talk about it once. I, I, I'm not sure that it's something that would warrant a yearly stipend and this, this affirmative action, like. I don't think we have such a rampant problem where employees are feeling that their protected class status are violated each year to justify. You know, an annual compensation where if you let this go for ten straight years, that's, that's fifty thousand dollars that you could have done something with, right? And I, it's something that doesn't sit well with me. So I want to bring this up to the board.
Thank you. I do want to point out that I have always been agreeing with that and we have. Reduced the administrative stipends by thirty thousand dollars.
But this, my, my thing is, you know, it would be the, I'm, I'm not very likely to vote that.
Are you suggesting tableing?
I would be, I would be happy, I, I, you know, Commissioner Barzello is happy to show me the, the. The contract between administrators and it gives the board some, we believe, and superintendent a whole lot of power to determine. How much money should reasonably be put for an activity? And I'm not opposed to if there's X amount of cases or X amount of hours worked, then we, we look to add certain amount of compensation. But the, the idea that you've got this and you might have, you might go three or four years of that title on a case and. And the fact that you're still going to get paid even though you didn't do any work, that's, that's how this currently runs in Brown, and I'd like to fix that.
Mr. Walker's point is possible to line item some of these.
You could table.
Yeah, so you would vote yes on such and such, excluding, you know, abstain on or vote no on. However, you want to do that or we could table.
Cause I, I would recommend just because we have, we have like seven people, you know, assigned for title nine. And one person can receive a compensation. So I would, I would support the idea of let's table title nine and affirmative action. And everything else to me seems logical because there's no money and I think we'd all agree that with the homeless McKenney event, those. I'm not even sure if that employee happened to be immature or not. I don't know. And I want to make sure those, to me, that's definitely, we want to make sure that that person always is. As commissioner, known, we do have students that are in foster care and they're a part of that activity.
Matt is also. There's two components in McKenney Bento, the actual homelessness liaison, which is the McKenney Bento. And then the educational child welfare, welfare, D C P P liaison, which is Marissa Ackerman. Oh, yeah, but she also deals with any student that gets based on district of under foster care that falls under, because they're not considered homeless, they're being placed here. Because of a home issue, home life issue, and that's Marissa Ackerman. This is Ackerman that takes care of that. So a little different than McKenney Bento.
I can't speak for this board, but I imagine this board would agree that we were comfortable with the McKenney Bento homeless welfare getting, you know, the compensation. But if, if the board says, let's just go forward and I lose four one five, I would recommend we table that.
So that's the motion to table.
It's illegal. How do I do that?
Move, move the table, whatever you specifically want.
I moved to table B eight and specifically, the only part of that I moved to table is. All the title, the title line position and the affirmative acting position. Why don't we just throw all of the titles to, to take a look at the whole, the entire process? Maybe the resolution until we say, let's, let's split the pot so that if those come up, everyone gets to opt in instead of just one person.
You need to set down.
Second back.
And it's not a debate of motion, so it's now a majority vote.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Pritzker?
Yes.
Mr. Boom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I also have something. I just, I wanted to. Discuss topical immediate action as a board that we can take with respect to security. And I, I want, how cool is that? A, a way that we can do that as a board is to create an enhoc security committee. Where similarly, right, how we need these other committees, we would have two. Members meet and then it would allow us to, you know, say rest of any security. Current security practices behind what these things that we're doing as a district allows us to collaborate. Possibly with Corona P D and also allow us to. Report out to the community, obviously, whatever is appropriate. I understand that security is a little different in the way that we can. Report out to the community, but I think by having a security committee. Enhoc in that way, now it would be able for us to take immediate action.
I'm sorry, I can't imagine. I think it's a good idea. I think that we. I think there's lots of things that we can be better, always for improvement. And so, you know, everything from looking at our policies, to looking at our buildings and making sure that. Our children and staff and the ministry are as safe as possible. And, you know, the schools are among the safest buildings in the country. It is, you know, significant, but it is also having our most precious people. So if we can keep them, you know, a little bit safer, we'd be happy to do that.
We're wanting to understand when. When we look at policies and like we get it. Does if there is the action that policy needs to be changed, what happens coming out of that?
We make recommendations to the policy committee to look at the policies. They would make revisions. Most likely, if there's school security revisions, they would include. Mrs. Palmer Izzy and Mr. Mark R. Two, the training districts, school safety specials. I also am trained as a safety specialist. So between my, and every committee and having their expertise. As well, big work between the policy committee and these enhoc security committee. We do have to put a time limit. You have to, you have to, your enhoc has to be. So you have to give a year, whenever we want, that when we make that. When you make a recommendation, you make a motion, go on whether it has a committee, there has to be an end time for it, right? You can always up the time, you can always extend it. But when you first make the motion, it's gonna.
Yeah, I think December thirty-first, we were, that'll allow us to kind of work through this year plan ahead for next year and then if we. Feel as though this is something that continues, we go from there. The other one thing, I don't know if this is something that we do right now, but. I had mentioned the collaboration with Corona P D, but also possibly an admin. I don't know if that's.
So I, I think that, not to interrupt you, I, I believe to the board president, if. You were to move forward and recommend that, I also would support a specific enhoc meeting just on safety. And I, I, you know, I think that, you know, we can encourage a superintendent to assign a principal to, or at least one, for instance, to be part of that.
Yes.
You mean the way Miss Dr. Miller and Mrs. Ken.
Also a principal, really, really, I should say with an admin. So that we, because they're building base.
Yeah.
So I think that.
And we can even rotate the principal, we can rotate. Each meeting have, having one or two principals at, and if you think the way Miss Palmer Izzy sits on the athletics and book curriculum committee. And Dr. Miller and Mrs. Simmons sit on education, our school safety specialist could be a regular attendee.
Yeah, that's. You know, there are so-called members of the committee that they participate in.
And I, and I love that idea of the rotating principals.
Could input be sought from Corona P D on any guidance?
Yes, and we do that regularly.
That's the same. You can invite anyone to open the meeting.
I just met with Chief Kim earlier in the week over the memorandum agreement between law enforcement and school district. So, yeah, I met. More than twenty-five minutes to an hour, in that range. And I will say that they are very accommodating for our needs. I'm sure if you're to do that. They're not a shorthand, shorthand division as well.
Yeah, do we do a motion for. Creating a. You type the difference.
I'm going to do a. Mr. Walker?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Pritzker?
Yeah.
Mr. Boom?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you have any, anything you wanted to bring up? I just. Thank you for bringing that, Mrs. Farrar, and getting that going. I just wanted to go over just a couple of quick things. There are ten of us. And I wanted to just thank Morris, the crowd, and family for allowing. Ten members, some of the board members, and actually our student representatives recently attending with us on Thursday. The ministries and staff, they are funding us to go over to St. Benedict Prep in Newark. It's going to be a learning day experience and I watched the sixty-minute episode. It's very, it seemed like it's going to be very rewarding to. What we're going to get out of it. So I really like to thank Bob Pratt for reaching out and. Allowing us to attend this on Thursday. So we report back when we come back from it at our next meeting. And Mr. Boom and I and these will be attending, so we bring back everything to. The board, but it should be a great day. I'm looking forward to it. I also wanted to congratulate our HBW winter concert, our students for the winter concert that they were in last week. They were amazing. And while our students have participated in the ceremony at all around. Those four of the graders, congratulations to all of them because wow. Meaning. Yeah, I thought it was been knocked out when I had a stumbling, because I wanted to put capital. Congratulations.
To the honorary competitors.
Yeah, so congratulations and thank you, Mr. W, for being one of the judges and to. Mayor Tamboro for being the judge and for everyone who attended. So all the things and. I mean, sorry, sorry, everyone for a typical long meeting. Thank you for being. So we are going to move on to our correspondence.
So at the next meeting, the, the board president has to nominate the two board members that are going to be part of the second thing. This is going to be formal, can just decide. Okay, very good.
Office head, the president applies to members.
And moving on to our resolutions. So I need a motion please to approve resolutions one. Motion by Mrs. Farrar, seconded by. Any discussion? Approved will be a complete call. Well.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah.
Mrs. Prudala?
Yeah.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Pritzker?
Yeah.
Mister Boom?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Moving on, I need a resolution to approve resolutions um for personnel, so resolutions. A one. All the way down to A six. Motion to approve resolution A one to A six on personnel. Motion by Mister Walker, seconded by. Mrs. Prudala, are there any discussions? Um, Mister Cruz, if you could please call well.
Mister Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Prudala?
Yeah.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Uh, uh, Mrs. Pritzker?
Yeah.
Mister Boom?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our education for resolutions, I need a motion to approve resolution B one. Through B. Nine.
And ten.
Oh, B ten, sorry, and are we just, we already did that, okay. To be ten. Motion by.
The move.
Mister Walker, seconded by.
I'll second.
Yeah, Mrs. Farrar, are there any discussions?
I have a quick question for B six, why is, um, the not heard question?
Yeah. Great.
Um, so this is.
Back, back.
Twenty two, sorry.
Yes. At first I thought I was like, oh, this is. Right, okay, thank you.
Moving on to, oh. No, any of all call Mister Cruz, sorry. Thank you.
Mister Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Uh, Prudala?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Pritzker?
Yes.
Mister Boom?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I need a motion please to approve athletics and co-curricular resolutions. B one to C two.
Boom, and remember C two would add it, so it's not on the, on the board.
Piquen?
C two, yeah, it's below the line.
See, it's below the line. Motion by Mister Walker, seconded by Mrs. Prudala, are there any discussions? Mister Cruz, if you could please call well.
Mister Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Prudala?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Pritzker?
Yeah.
Mister Boom?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, there are no resolutions for facilities. On Sepania, I need a motion please to approve resolution. B one.
Oh, three twelve.
Farrar, seconded by. Seconded by Mister Boom. Any discussion? No, Mister Cruz, if you could please call well.
Mister Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Prudala?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Pritzker?
Yes.
Mister Boom?
Yes.
And thank you, finally on the motion to approve governance and policy, resolution F one. Opened by. Mrs. Prudala, seconded by.
Sure.
Mister Walker, any discussion? Mister Cruz, if you could please call well.
Mister Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Prudala?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yeah.
Mrs. Pritzker?
Yes.
Mister.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we are up to public comments. So anyone that would like to speak on anything, you have three minutes to please state your names and come up to the podium. And thank you all for being so patient in being here.
Hi, hi, thank you, um, I'm listed gentleman. Um, I have a few months to go. Some things, um, thank you, Ms. Farrar, for suggesting a security committee. Uh, I think that is great, I had sent you guys a email a few months ago, um. I think security is a uh very important topic and I hope that it is something that we see move forward. Um, especially with the budget moving forward for the twenty twenty four, twenty five school year, um, I think with this security committee. Uh, knowing the budget's coming up, we wanna start thinking about how you can utilize the finances to bring in, um, you know. Security guards and SRO officers, um, security cameras, something or something along that line. I was floored by the fact that I could just open up that front door and walk in. I've been in this building before, I'm not super familiar with it, I didn't know where Learning Commons was, I walked around by myself. Nobody directed me. Found it on my own, that bored me, that's not what I'm used to in high school that I work at. I've been in education for twenty years, have a master's degree, I'm a high school assistant principal, so I know a little bit about. Um, where I'm coming from, this was totally new that I was able to walk in a building and had, um, no guidance, no security. Uh, no meeting to walk around with me and tell me what to go, so, um, I think that is something we need to look at, um. Uh, this is, you just said, you said that there was a memorandum of agreement with Corona P D, is that something that is public that, like, is that a new thing? Um, that we would know what's gonna come about, um.
It's posted, it it will be posted to our website, but it's also, if you just Google uh memorandum of agreement between law enforcement. It's the same in every um school district.
Oh, so it's just a a boilerplate one, it's not a specific one with how the Corona P D is gonna work, like in the, in the school.
Yeah, it does, but it, okay, it's the way it works in every school district with regard to um substance abuse, um. See, a certain types of crimes, uh, I was hoping it was something a little more specific, but more uh Corona P D presidents, considering you don't have um SRO officers. So that's, that's what I was hoping for. Corona police is in our school quite often actively, and we do have a a very comprehensive safety and security plan for each. Building that conforms to the hundred and each points of required checklist from the State Department of Education. So uh they are not public, for obvious reasons, but uh we do have one for each school, which is very comprehensive.
Okay, um, mention the parent academies, if you knew of any ways to actually get parents in the building, I would love to know about that, I went to the digital one. And it was not briefly attended, that was really sad, um, I am the total one corner meter and I try like crazy to get parents into the building of a high school and I can't do it. So, uh, I would love to work together, maybe even work together, Bloomfield and Verona, to try to get ways to get parents in, cause I can't figure it out. Um, and the other last thing, if I still have time, the school lunches, my daughter goes to E Q W and I cannot believe the amount of money that I spend on her school lunch. It is insane. Um, and then to find out that milk is not included at her school lunch, so that she spends a dollar on the chocolate milk. And then right before the new year, that dollar chocolate milk wasn't available, so she had to spend almost three dollars on, oh, it wasn't my timer. Okay, so she has spent almost three dollars and her four dollar and fifty cent lunch was almost nine dollars. It is insane amount um that I spend on lunch and it did a cost comparison just real quick, Bloomfield, Verona. Um, the school lunch in Bloomfield is three dollars and ten cents, in Verona it's four dollars and fifty cents, and that doesn't include milk. A bagel in Bloomfield is a dollar fifty and Verona it is uh three dollars, or no, a dollar, or two dollars and seventy five cents, sorry, I'm. Nervous and I'm worried I'm uh missing my time here, um, a pretzel in Bloomfield is dollar fifty and Verona it's two dollars and sixty cents. I know that has to do with the lack of participation in the national school uh lunch program. Um, we also missed out, I'm not sure if anybody knows, in two years of free lunch for our students, because we weren't part of the national free lunch program during the COVID years. So, I feel those kids got two years of free lunch, parents didn't get dining for lunch for two years, that was huge. Um, and Verona had eight hours in the day for my kid, um, so those were just things that, uh, I know there's down calls for participating in the national school. I know there's reasons why we don't wanna do it, um, but. We have to find a ways to, if we're not gonna participate, keep our school lunch down, because it is, it's a lot, that that is a lot of money that we're spending, um. For school lunch for every day with everything else going on, so, that's it.
So if I could just jump in real quick, real quick, um, as far as the um, you know, the memorandum of agreement. Uh, a lot of them are standard and, you know, there's also a, uh, I forget the statute, that was, that the schools have to send. The blueprints of all their police, local police, but what we've seen a lot of M O As is. The agreement where if there ever was an emergency, then in these cards, they have their, their, their screen. They would have access or have the ability to have access to what's ever done, the the security banners from the school. Uh, so I think that's a good one, and as far as the art, as far as the the food service. Every five years, the district's required to put out to bid, uh, the better bid, the their food service program. So I I don't know where we're at, and and where we're at in that timeline, but I know that within the next five years, we're gonna have to put that out anyway, and we'll see. Sometimes you probably have to bid on only one person bids, uh, but the, sometimes you put out a bid and there's more competitors that are looking to get to that, that market that you have, so. I I also hope that.
So, just so that you're aware, we've been working with C R G um to do the mapping of our school.
That's really good.
Yeah, and um they are finished and they are being learned process of being uploaded into uh for our police. It's a, I'm sure Bloomfield has it, the governor came out and made it free for everyone it used to be a cost. Uh, so that is finally done, that's a very tiny pro- process, but. Um, they should have them in their cars, on their phones, uh, hopefully we'll never have to use them.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much.
I just wanna add, regarding the uh national school lunch uh program and uh currently, the provider that we have right now is uh Popponian. Um, they do provide, uh, uh, they do participate as a national school lunch uh program provider. Uh, the uh R P that we're carrying with them, we have one more year, so technically, uh, the school district can go out. Uh, and the discussion, I know that we're having this is finances, um, if we do decide to venture into the national school lunch program, there's a separate R P for that specifically, so. Um, it would in, if we are gonna participate in the national school lunch program. And we'll go an R P for the national school lunch program and look for provider in 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 that arena. Or continue staying private, um, and not participate in the program. Uh, I know that the cost, um, is something that, uh, it has always been an issue, especially now with, uh, uh. Of crucify issues, I think this past summer and the previous year, uh, four fifty, uh, I I. I understand that the concern from the parent, I think, um, sometimes you, you know, you actually load the lunch account for your, your child, but then there's also. Out out card menu where they have uh Snapple and Gellerator, I'm not sure what was, uh, drinks there are available. That could actually, um, rank up pretty quickly, it's pizza and and all these other additional items that they have at the disposal, I think, um. I know that that's something that, uh, it's a home discussion, um, and and I know it's a little, uh, I'm not sure. How much controls would be in place, but that's something that we could definitely, uh, discuss with, uh, you know, school administrators and. And especially at the middle school or, or, uh, I don't mention students limited, but it's gonna be, um, middle students in high school that will have these options.
Thank you. With regard to our P D for food services, I would be willing to entertain, um. When this contract expires, going out for an R P regardless of what we do. I I really felt a little hijacked, uh, on that, I was early dismissal the other day. Um, I was told that night that if you call an early dismissal and we, you're on the hook for all of it. So I, I felt pressured. I had an email, I've been superintended for ten years, I called a lot early dismissal in that ten years, and we were never charged for the food. Um, if we went on early dismissal, so I wasn't pleased with that, um, and I don't know. Whether that actually would have come to fruition or not, or that was, but I'd love to have a conversation with you and with the the Popponian, uh, leadership about that.
This is, this is just to make sure we're clear, this is not a, a reflection of our, but we appreciate the food service workers a thousand percent. And a lot of times when you switch companies, the same, the new company hires the same workers, uh, but I wanna make that clear.
Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Um, right?
Yes.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Barr, for. So on Thursday, June eighteen, I emailed the board with a few questions about the incident that occurred on a Friday, June twelve. And I did wish to apologize for this. During our conversation, some of my questions in charge were definitely addressed. From the time we discussed and had the conversation, so now. Things have continued to unravel and the story continues to change with many of us. Feeling mistrust for the word of education. That mistrust has led me to now file for an Oprah request for taking a police reports. Police video to verify the information that was shared or not shared with parents by the word of education. This mistrust could have been simply avoided by sharing information beforehand. The same information that is available on the internet to our children and families alike. That's my statement, the C R G works, it's a great program that you're speaking of. But the problem with the C R G is that when you don't have enough police officers to respond to the calls, who will respond to? Correct, but the unfortunate part is that the amount of officers that we have here during the day. And with the new housing going up, the calls of service that we definitely go up. From simple calls of service, from parking complaints to noise complaints, to neighbor neighbor complaints. Will, I believe, put us in a difficult situation to be able to continue to safeguard our kids. With that, I do think, once again, thank you, that we do need another line of safeguarding our kids. Which is truly the most important part and using my role as a team. Thank you.
Just to know, if, um, if you have to Oprah. Um, we start it from the police, not from us.
That's true, oh, okay.
Yes, I follow that, I think.
Oh, okay, I thought you were asking.
No, correct. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, Howard. Uh. I didn't prepare any remarks, but I mean, here's the punchline, the safety of our kids is the absolute. It's the only priority, you know, you talk a lot about a lot of important stuff. Uh, tonight, you know, mother was a teacher, cousin of teachers, I I get it. Nothing else matters, right? Volby, Sandy Hook, Columbine, these are places where there were board meetings like this. And there were parents that raised concerns and maybe there were committees, God bless. But who knows what they did and how fast they did or how not fast they did it. I don't know what the next scheduled ad hoc committee or committee meeting is, you have a board event meeting, and it's, it's Thursday, maybe the meeting Friday. Monday, Tuesday next week, whatever your next meeting is, I highly recommend you pause that meeting. Who does the appointing of the safety people, you can? You know, you go home tonight, pick two names out of the hat, think you got them right there, whatever the next meeting is. Defer it and have that first meeting and out of that meeting, come up with clear objectives on how you're gonna get. Like whatever it is, more cops, more cameras, SROs, get the parents involved. We don't have buses, pick them one for the buses and get some people here. The only thing that's gonna keep our kids safe is just more. Okay, I appreciate your work, whatever your next meeting is, please defer and replace with that first safety meeting, let's hear some like concrete items. Not like pushing off later in the year, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, okay, well, first, I just really wanna start with Ms. Farrar, thank you so much for finally bringing to light this important issue. Um, I really appreciate it, so thank you. So, my name again is Kristen Kissner and I am a resident of fifteen years and have three children, sending them to public schools. I'm here again to voice my concerns of the lack of transparency, communication and training when it comes to the school safety. During the last board meeting, I spoke about the safety concerns at H W following the building, the access by an outside individual. On three separate occasions in early December, in which parents were only notified following the third access. It is important to note again that only after multiple emails and phone calls. Were parents finally given proper communication nearly ten days following these events. Unfortunately, we are here again following the arrest of this same individual for criminal trespass on license entry and structures. At Brookdale Elementary School on January twelfth, resulting in sparseration for a period of two days. This incident occurred exactly ten days following the last board meeting. And parents were only given formal notification on January twenty first. This again is nearly ten days later and only after multiple phone calls and emails. Since December, we have heard comments from the districts that minimize the situation. For example, we have heard it happened outside of school hours.
For example, we have heard it happened outside of school hours. You do not want to create panic. You are just one of two parents, two female. Parents have not been attending board meetings. And most recently. We must balance community notification with protecting the district from defamation. First, it's important to point out that a school shooting occurred in Iowa. Outside of school hours, just two days following our last board meeting. In which the school principal and a sixth grade student were shot and killed, along with multiple others injured. The reality is our children and staff access our school buildings at all hours. Just last week, VHS hosted H D W band concerts with hundreds in attendance. In the evening hours, with the doors unlocked and no additional security measures. As a result, we should all be concerned about access and trespassing, both during school hours and outside of school hours. Second, parents in the district have a right to know about these recent events, as this issue has been ongoing. And has now impacted two schools, resulting in two separate arrests over the past month. Parents have a right to know so that they may educate and protect their children. Parents should not have to write emails, make phone calls, or attend board meetings to access this information. Administrators and staff should be trained so that any incident of trespassing. Does not take twenty four hours to report, and does not require a check in with our superintendent as to whether or not it should be reported to the, to the police. By now, the protocol should be clear. Third, the district is expressing concern over a potential defamation lawsuit, is not prioritizing the safety of our students and staff. This only demonstrates that the district is more concerned with protecting themselves over protecting our children. As stated in the last board meeting, we must do better, and I very much appreciate you. Trying to do better, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, anyone else? Want to come to the podium?
Can I just clarify something, um, Mrs. Studo? I want to clarify, Mrs. Studo did the right, by calling me, she was notified twenty four hours after the trespass had occurred. She reached out to me because it was not a serious situation. It was not something she noticed, it was something that would go up to her attention the next day, she reached out to me. That's the typical scenario.
But we can't bring that, well. That, right?
We're not talking about a possession, but.
Oh, very good.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and again, just to reiterate, um. We have increased the security in this district. Tenfold. And a little over a year, so we are security, I know there's some differences of opinion, and we will, we'll work those out. Um, with regard to. This particular event that occurred, I'm not here to argue with anyone, I don't want to, I appreciate you coming out. Um, I've tried to reach out to people, uh, have a conversation, because I think email loses, um, a lot in translation. So, I picked up the phone and tried to have conversations, uh, with people that have reached out to me, um, I hear what you're saying, I understand your point of view. It will, um, hopefully not continue to happen, and then we don't have to continue to have this conversation. But please know that we have, as I mentioned before, a checklist that is ninety something pages for each school. Our, our principals had to be involved in producing that, when I got here in July of twenty twenty two, we did not have that. We spent several months going through our schools, we had experts come in from home and security, school security, and we went through our schools, they went through our plans, they made recommendations. I will have Director Gale come up and, and do it again this year, put us into a lockdown, tell us what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. We are very security minded, and though it doesn't appear that way with this one in- instance. This is, this is more secure today than it was to you, by far.
Ms. Beech, I think I've been on the board the longest up here, I do have to agree with you, um, since you came here, that was your main goal when you started, you could not believe. Um. The security issues that we've had, so. You know, I understand, well, listen, I, we all understand, everybody, our children are. Are, they, we, our most prized possession, right, so we want to make sure our, all our children are safe. Absolutely. Um, and we are, you know, we are continuing, Mrs. Beech, that is continuing, um, to work towards our goals, and. You know, it's gonna take, one of our goals is communication, I can do better. Agreed. Uh, everyone can, right, like, everyone in that life can do better, but you've been. You've been thrown a lot of, of things since you started here, so, um, I, you know, I'm not giving anybody. A pass, but. You know, you have improved a lot of things with security that was. From that. Anyone else want to come to the podium?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, I have a question. The interior doors, you talked about vestibule doors, yeah, right? Are you aware that your vestibule doors are missing a stripe and a molyne, so that somebody was to come into the exterior door, the inner door wouldn't pop?
No, I'm not aware of that.
And it's still over the entire high school?
That's, that'll be short.
Yeah, well, yes.
Right, that you.
Yeah.
Simple thing, right?
Yeah.
It's.
I was, police officer, twenty eight years, door valve, on a lawsuit for thirty years, these are the things that I fought at valve. For officers, for custody, because it's important, right, so every time I come here, pointing, I come through that door, and the next set of doors. There's nothing that would prevent, if somebody came in that first set of doors, there's nothing that would prevent anybody here to secure that second set of interior doors.
Mr. Cruz, I, I think, when somebody gets buzzed into the high school. They get into, they get into, they're going into a separate area. Yeah. So. They're, they're not coming in through. Those doors just happen to be unlocked. Where you came through.
Yes.
So.
You're a hundred percent right, what I'm saying is, the, and I'm saying, maybe it's by design, I'm just waiting to your attention, when you look at the interior doors by gymnasium, right, that's most of the time. The, the second set of interior doors in that vestibule is missing a, it's kind of like the contractor, then he put the latch on the door, the stripe plate. And the double doors that, or breakaway doors if it's emergency, the molyne is missing completely. Maybe it's by design, maybe it's something that I overlooked, just simply bringing to your attention, and maybe it's something that we need to look at in our school system. That it's known, contractors forget to put these, and to us, it appears to be the norm, unless you are familiar with these type of security measures in the big area.
So, we'll have Mr. Um, quality area take a look at, at that, Mr. Cruz?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Thank you, guys, for all coming out. Um, our next. So, I'll do that.
I'm the last one.
So, I'll say both seats. Okay, so our next public meeting will be held on February thirteenth, twenty twenty four. We are also, um, having a, a board retreat with Charlie Peterson attending, um, for us on February sixth, from five to eight. So, our regular meeting on February thirteenth will begin confidential at six P M and the public session at seven P M in the wrong high school learning commons. I need a motion to.
We were wondering, we saw the email about pizza, where's pizza?
I don't know, where do we buy it from?
Oh, it's, it's still.
For the sake?
Yeah.
Or the?
What, you're gonna keep making the card?
I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Um, motion one, this is Brizella, second, uh, after Mr. Ferrara. Um. All the motion, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is nine twenty.